It is now 6:38 and we will start the committee of the whole. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Here.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any audience time for this committee?
Yes. Mr. Clyde McLamore.
Had it all mixed up. You ready?
Yes.
All right, once again, I'm here to ask this council, do not make the mistake of taking away the citizens of Waukegan's rights or have the choice to be who they want to be. If citizens want to be Democrat or Republican, Zion, Waukegan, and North Chicago are strong Democrat areas. By you, Aldermen and women, voting to put a referendum on is total disrespect to your districts. We don't want people to run for office and we don't know who they are and what they are about. We see what this mayor did when she was campaigning. She swore she was about transparency. Today, I needed to talk to the foyer officers and I was told I couldn't come upstairs. What is she hiding up here? This is City Hall, public building, which taxpayers pay for. The lies and deceit and misrepresentation of the truth is not the kind of government for this city. Our senator, our state ref are both Democrats. And if this council vote to put something like a referendum on the ballot, do you think the city could get any state funding? The congressman is a Democrat. Do you think that he'll put any effort in federal money coming to the city? You can lead a horse to the water, but you can't make him drink. With that being said, our mayor is leading this council over the cliff. Please think before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLamore. That concludes the audience time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. New business. Review and discussion regarding ward redistricting map based on 2020 census. Having tech problems, okay.
So while Noel goes through this, and worse comes to worse, we can just drag the easel up. I can give a quick kind of primer on this. So every 10 years, the federal government conducts the nationwide census. The census is an effort to count every person in the United States. It's not every citizen. It's not every adult. It's not every voter. It's every person, which is why your city government, your representatives, your Aldermen probably were pushing you two years ago to register for the census. The 2020 census was completed. And you're probably wondering why we're talking about the 2020 census here in 2022. It takes a while for the count to come through. It takes a while to get the information down to the level of the census blocks, which is the smallest geographical unit that we know how many people are within or how many people actually responded to the census within. Once we get those numbers, and those final numbers came in late last fall for the city of Waukegan, it showed that the city's population had inched up by about 300 people. But that distribution was not completely even. There were some wards that reported statistically significantly lower populations and others that grew in a statistically significant way. And when I talk about statistically significant, I'm talking about only a few percentage points. But a few percentage points matters when you're drawing ward maps. The idea, there's a principle in Illinois law that units of representation, whether they be congressional districts or whether they be individual wards, should be near as equally in population as possible. That comes down to the idea of one person, one vote. And that if a ward had a significantly higher population and still only elected one Alderman or all the person, then the votes of any one of those individual people actually counts less. And so every 10 years, we are supposed to look and adjust at the ward system to ensure that there is a ward population that is as close to average as possible. Using the new census numbers, and just as a quick side note, we've been hovering about 89,300 for a while now. Once the city hits 90,000, under law, it would actually be entitled to a 10th ward. And quite possibly, if more people had filled out their forms in 2020, we would have to build a bigger dais. But that is not the case here. So we still have nine wards. And all that needs to be done right now is to adjust. And the adjustment was in a goal to get as close to the average ward population as possible. We took the reported population of the city under the 2020 census, divided it by nine, and came up with a number of 9,924. That is the ideal average population of our, what zoning is. It's an extremely powerful tool that city staff, community development specifically, use the GIS system, which is a geographical information system. It's a very powerful tool that overlays lots of data. It actually had to get geographically larger. It had to capture more blocks to make sure that it had more population. If a ward gained in population, it had to get a little bit smaller. One of the things that we noted was that the wards in the southeast quadrant, the southeast quadrant quadrant of the second and fourth, shrunken population relative to the others. And necessarily that there are actually less people living there? We don't know. What it does mean is that fewer people reported, returned their census forms. So in reported population, first, second, and fourth got smaller. The fifth, third, and eighth got larger. Seventh, and ninth, and sixth stayed about the same. So what we had to do is we had to kind of shift the size of the wards from the southeast to the northwest. The staff tried to do this with as little disruption in neighborhoods and geographical boundaries as possible. So there were times where a block may have been moved from one ward to another. But the idea was to not cut neighborhoods in half if you could help it and not shift away large populations of what had been represented by one Alderman or used to being in a specific ward if possible. So are we up and running?
IT saves the day.
Wonderful. So you can stop listening to me talk and actually listen to Noel. She can talk a little bit about the work that was done. Do you have anything to add, actually, Noel?
I think you did a fantastic job. Oh, sorry.
Okay. So what we do have here, and we had posted up on the easel, on the east side of the room is a giant ward map and then the individual wards. What is posted up here on the, or is being displayed up here, is a depiction of the first ward. And you can see what I refer to as a thick dashed line or a railroad track line. That's the current ward boundary. If you see purple outside of that, those are voting, sorry, census blocks that are being added. As I mentioned, 1, 2, and 4 had to get bigger. Now, 1, 2, and 4 clumped together. So they actually had to take from each other and then move, kind of crawl to the northwest a little bit. Noel, do you want to talk? We can run through each one and you can talk about some notable features.
Sure, we can do that. So the first ward, as Stu mentioned, needed to expand.
Excuse me, I apologize. Noel, it's coming across really muffled.
I'm sorry, I'll take my mask off.
Thank you so much.
Is that better? A little bit? You're welcome. So the areas that the first ward is expanding, right up here, south of Washington Street, on the west side of County Street, we're adding this block group. Adding this one on the south side of Glen Rock and west of Jackson, on the south side of Glen Rock and north side of Belvedere. So the ward boundary over here now goes from Washington Street all the way down Glen Rock to Belvedere, back over to Jackson, and back south. The eastern boundary on Washington extends one block further east than the existing ward. Again, the dark line is the existing ward and the color shows the proposed ward map. Any questions on the first ward? Okay.
Noel, if you don't know it offhand, don't bother looking it up. But I'm just curious, how many residents did the first ward lose?
I don't know it offhand, but let's see if we can get this other document to open. Maybe not. Thomas, are you in the room? Would you go pull up the totals? Yeah, I can't get the other document to open here that shows that.
Alderman Turner was the question, how many, how much population did the first ward lose?
Yes.
Between, the population in the 2010 decennial census was 9,898. In the 2020 decennial census, it was 9,617. So about, just shy of 300.
Thank you.
And once again, with these new boundaries, it will be much closer to 9,924.
I'm sorry, say that one more time. I'm larger. That's what I'm understanding.
Yes, any ward that lost population gets fewer.
So everyone know that we have already pre-talked about this, so yes.
Thank you, Stu.
And thank you, Thomas.
There we go, there we go. You're good.
So the second ward, then, as I just pointed out with the first ward, the second ward lost this area, south of Glen Rock and north of Belvedere, into the first ward. Second ward has gained on the east side of Green Bay because this is all now one block group. Apparently, it didn't used to be. So the block groups have to stay together in the same ward. So second ward expands over here, no additional population. The population's in the whole block group. But then also expands north of the former boundary at Washington Street, up McCary Road, to Monroe Street, and over to the fourth ward boundary. Questions on the second ward? And again, we have, staff has reviewed all these ward boundaries with the Aldermen. And we've responded to questions from the Aldermen. So if they're not asking questions, it's because they've already asked them. They certainly challenged us on making sure that this was right. So we appreciate all the feedback on that.
Sure did.
So the third ward. Yes, sir?
I got a question. So you're saying the second ward lost, lost or gained?
The second ward now will be growing with this. But we had to, as you recall, we had to put some territory. We had to expand the first ward. So the first ward only touched the second ward and the fourth ward. So it could only go into those two wards to take territory. So then everything moves outward a little bit.
So I've gained Dildger Avenue, correct?
You have gained. So this area that used to be in your ward, north of Belvedere and south of Gladstone, will now be in the first ward if this is approved by the council. And the second ward will now come here. Let me zoom in a little bit further here.
Okay.
But his question, his question was if he lost people and it does look like he did.
Population-wise.
Yeah, population-wise.
You did lose people. So what they did was you had to go out and expand the area to pick up the people that you lost.
Make the difference up, correct?
Approximately 631 voters or persons were lost between 2010 and 2020. And almost the exact same amount, minus a little bit, were being put back in, but from a larger area.
The third ward, then. Again, this area here goes to the second ward that had been in the third. The third ward boundary is currently here on this dark line. So it would lose these two blocks to the fourth ward, but would gain this one block from the fourth ward. Would lose this census block to the ninth ward, as well as north of Grand, west of Green Bay, up here. And then on the northern boundary, the third ward would extend north to Glenn Flora Avenue, on the west side of Lewis. Continue west on Glenn Flora and then would take this one block north of Glenn Flora. Any questions on the third ward? Fourth ward. Fourth ward again loses this one block to the first ward and this little area here on the south side of Glen Rock gains these two blocks from the third ward and loses this one block to the third ward. And then on the northern boundary that had been at Grand, it will extend north of Grand, here, whoops, sorry, here up to Julian, over here to Porter Street, and then along Jackson. Questions on the fourth ward? Sorry, I'm slow. My computer doesn't work the same way as this one. Okay, so the fifth ward, then. Again, the dark line is the existing boundary. The fifth ward will lose this one block to the sixth ward. Will lose this block to the third ward. Will gain this block because it's part of the same census block group as this. So it has to move. Same thing over here, the south end of the Yeoman Creek site will now be in the sixth ward because this is all one block group. So it has to stay together.
What's that line? Oh, Greenwood, okay.
So this will be Roger Edwards instead of in the middle of Greenwood. Where the street doesn't go through, it will actually go on Roger Edwards there. And then the fifth ward also gains this area, south of Sunset Avenue, from the eighth ward. Questions on the fifth ward?
Wait a minute, Noel, explain again about the line over here around the landfill?
This? So the current ward boundary is this dark dashed line?
Right.
This is all one block group now? I'm assuming it wasn't in the prior census, but without comparing a map, I don't know for sure. But you're not supposed to put a boundary line through a block group. So this is all one block group now, so it stays together.
So that line is going to move down to?
This line will move down to here. So the color shows the proposed ward. It's a little bit difficult with the nature preserve there to see. But this is all purple down here. So with that, let's move on to the sixth ward. Let's start at the south end since we've covered that with the fourth. So the sixth ward again loses this area to the fourth ward on the south side of Porter and the west side of Jackson and the south side of Julian here for one block. The sixth ward would gain this one block from the fifth ward and would gain this part of this block group from the fifth ward. Whoops, sorry, too far. And will gain these three blocks from the seventh ward, north of Sunset.
It's really hard to see that, Noel, under that Roger Edwards Avenue. What does that say? Waukegan, what?
Larson Nature Preserve.
Edison Square.
Ah, there you go. Oh, a nature preserve, okay.
Yeah, the green coloring makes it more difficult to see that that's purple now.
So I'll go on with Masato.
Want this out?
Oh, and the sixth ward also loses this little block up here to the seventh ward, north of Gulf.
Right.
That block was in the sixth ward. Almost missed that one.
So that area that I gained.
Up here?
Yes, that.
Could you speak into your microphone, sir, so folks can hear you?
All right, thank you for the reminder. So that area is a rather large apartment complex there. How do we notify? I mean, I don't have any problem doing it, but I'm just saying, is there a formal, legal process for notifying anybody who's shifting wards to? How do we do that?
I don't know that there is a legal.
We don't have to, I don't think.
No, there's not required by state or federal law. But you know, there's nothing stopping the city from coming up with a neighbor notification or publication that, hey, your ward's moved out from under you.
All right, I'll take care of it. Thank you.
We certainly can do something from the staff at the mayor's direction if there's a desire to notify everyone whose ward is changing. Any questions on the sixth?
I don't have a question on the sixth, but I do have a question with Alderman Turner who was just stating that. There should be a process that every resident is told what ward they are in and what precinct that they are in because it changed from the county. So we need to make sure that some notification goes out so that everyone knows because their polling place may also change also. So there's not a lot of people here tonight. And so we need to make sure that we do get out some notification after this is passed so that everybody knows where they are going to be voting at, as well as, did they go from fifth ward to fourth ward and vice versa?
Yeah, go ahead, Stu.
Yeah, we will have to file a certified copy of this ordinance with the county. And when we do that, we can speak with the county clerk to determine if any communications go out from the county and what those would be. And if we should supplement that to ensure that the residents know who their representatives are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Stu. So the seventh ward. The seventh ward loses, I can zoom in again. Again, this is what we just covered. Loses this block north of Gulf that had been in the sixth ward. It's now back in the seventh.
I have a question.
Sorry.
Now, how many constituents are in the seventh ward?
Total?
How many? Yes.
Now or under this map?
Under this map.
9,958. So that, once again, the target number was 9,924 and...
So if everyone knows, especially our constituents, you see that each ward has equivalent, almost equal, is just as many. Now, the first ward may look smaller on the map, but it has the same amount, if not more.
There are some wards like the ninth, which is very spread out.
Yes. So our constituents need to know that.
Right, so with each ward, again, the target, as Stu stated, was 9,924 residents in each ward. So you know, doing the math, when you change a ward boundary, you have to change it to something that's adjacent. And we tried to get the numbers as close to even or zero here as we could. So if you look at this column needed to the 9,924 goal, it's a little bit confusing because of the negative and positive. They're actually the opposite. So minus 10, you need to subtract 10 to get to 9,924 because the population is 9,934. So the first ward is 10 over, the second ward is 50 under, the third ward is seven under, the fourth ward is four over, the fifth ward is 12 under, the sixth ward is 40 over, the seventh ward is 25, I'm sorry, is 40 over, the seventh ward is 25 over, the eighth ward is one over, and the ninth ward is six under. So with each of these wards, the highest percentage from zero is half a percent. So we're significantly less than the 1% target. We're not at zero, but we're awfully close when you consider the size of each ward individually and the size of the city as a whole, to be no more than 50 people in a ward population of 9,924, almost 10,000 people.
You know, just out of curiosity, can you scroll right? I want to see the breakdown by ethnicity in the wards.
Sure. And I can zoom in or out more, too. It is a PDF, so I can't play with it too much, but... These numbers are relatively similar to the last census for each ward.
Yep. About right for the sixth ward.
Good there. I'll go back to the maps. Okay, so the seventh ward, again, this little piece came back to the seventh from the sixth. This piece is moving to the sixth ward. And then as we go a little further north, the seventh ward now will go on the north side of York House. It will go west to Newcastle and north to Edgewood. And also encompasses this area here, south of Everett Road, on the east side of Lewis. Questions on wards seven?
Just a comment. I had asked Stuart if this process had to be completed now. He indicated that it did not have to be completed, but in order to have it current and not have to catch up at a later date, it was in our best interest to do this.
That's correct. Although we did not need to redistrict because we did not gain a new ward and none of our wards were horribly out of whack with regard to population, the issue is if you don't adjust this, the swings that can happen, and you saw very large swings happen in a 10-year period, the swings that can happen in a 20-year period can be monumental. And you know, for a city that has gone through so many demographic changes over the past 50 years, it's important for Waukegan to try and remain constant or regularly reassess these numbers.
Thank you, Stu. So the eighth ward, again, this is the changing boundary between the seventh and eighth that I just touched on, on the seventh ward map. And then down here on the southwest side, this area, south of Sunset Avenue, this is Green Bay Road, the blue line. This goes to the fifth ward from the eighth. So the eighth loses both of those areas.
And I was the one that lost the most, right?
Let me double-check.
Yes, you had the largest increase in population, so your ward had to get smaller.
I was over 10,000. Yeah, so I had to lose 600.
And we got you within one of that target. And we got you within, within one of that target. Any questions on the eighth ward? Okay, then the ninth ward, we won't show the whole ninth ward because nothing south and west could change. Again, this is the change between the ninth and the second ward that I talked about previously because this is all one block group. And the larger impact is in the third ward. The third ward loses this area on the east side of Green Bay and north side of Washington, south of Brookside, that becomes the ninth ward. And on the west side of Green Bay, north of Grand, up here, becomes the ninth ward. Questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Noel, I just have one comment. I think that your staff did an excellent job of bringing in the alderpersons, making sure that we got an opportunity to look at our individual maps as well as those maps that we're going to be impacting. So they took the necessary time. No one got everything they wanted, but certainly it evened out the, the numbers. So your staff needs to be commended for continually calling us in, making sure that we understood where the lines need to be drawn. So they did an excellent job.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Isabel Guadarama, who was our newest planner that I stole from the engineering department, did the heavy lifting on the mapping and double calculating and all of that, and Thomas and Stu and I contributed to that effort, and everybody worked pretty hard at it, so we thank you for.
I validate that as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I want to thank everybody who worked on this because we really kept the politics out of this and made this a mathematical equation where it was just getting the numbers that we needed to be for each ward. And again, I want to thank the staff who did this. As they will tell you, I stayed completely out of it, so I didn't really see it until the end, but my whole mission was, let's just make this a numbers game, and we, we accomplished that, and I'm so proud of the staff for doing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Okay.
And so the, the ordinance actually is going to appear on the regular city council agenda tonight for approval, under new business.
Next item is the discussion of the referendum to adopt a nonpartisan election system for local officers. This is just a discussion. Who would like to open the discussion?
I'd like to say something.
Okay. Please, before we get started, I'm going to ask you guys to say who you're, who's talking, because especially when I look in this direction, the reflection off the glass is so bad, I can't tell. So if you could just speak into the mic when you talk. Alderman Florian, you have the four.
Thank you, yes, this is Alderman Florian. It was mentioned earlier that, from a resident, that this came from the mayor. This did not come from the mayor, this came from Alderman Turner and Alderman Moiseo, they were the ones that suggested this. The mayor has, in my opinion, my experience has never mentioned this to me. Mr. McLemore, I don't know if you heard that, I was actually addressing that to you. This, this motion about nonpartisan came from Alderman Turner and Alderman Moiseo, it did not come from the mayor. She's never mentioned anything about having a nonpartisan election. It was the two of them that requested that we discuss this. Alderman Moiseo. Two Democrats. I just wanted to point that out.
Any other? Alderman Moiseo, I'm sorry. I just think it's time, I said, the city of Chicago is nonpartisan, am I right, Stu?
Yeah, the city of Chicago is actually the most notable of, of large cities that have nonpartisan elections.
The city of Chicago is nonpartisan. And I've said this a thousand times up here, the Democratic Party not one time has ever called me and asked me to vote a certain way. They haven't. Hell, when I first started, they ran people against me. So I just think we've had independent mayors, we've had independent aldermen, party politics does not come into play up here. 19 years, I've never known party politics to come into play. It just, it, it doesn't happen. And any state politician or national politician is going to understand, he's going to look at data, his own data and national data, and see how people vote, and he's going to placate to those people that get votes. But in, in the local, the local municipalities, it doesn't happen. I think this is going to leave North Chicago as the only municipality that is partisan, am I correct on that, Stu, or am I off base on that? At least in Lake County, for sure.
The, the, the difference is, is that most communities run partisan elections, but in most municipalities, the candidates do not run with established political parties. So you do not see on a, like a village trustee, anyone running as a Republican or Democrat, that is exceedingly rare in Lake County and even in Cook County.
The other thing is, it may also cut down on elections, maybe Stu can explain that later, that means you will not get inundated with flyers, which everybody hates. You're going to get, the chances are, you may just get one election to determine who your local official is. Depending on what happens, you, you may, may have to go to another one. But the biggest point of it is, party politics does not come, in my opinion, in 19 years, it does not come into anything, any decision that's ever been made up here, in my opinion. I just thought it was time that we did it.
Stu, could you explain though, this is Alderman Florian, by the way, could you explain about the election process though, the way you explained it to us on Thursday about how the people go on the ballot and about how they move to the next election and that kind of stuff? Because it's not just removing, whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, it changes the way the actual election occurs.
Yeah, given that we're, we're also at 7:15, I'll try and be brief. And if you, you know, if you want to cut me off, let me know. So what's being proposed or what's being discussed, this is not actually up for vote tonight, is a resolution to put a referendum on the ballot to switch Waukegan to a nonpartisan election system. As Alderman Moiseo said, there are some municipalities that have moved towards this, namely the city of Chicago is probably the biggest one. A number of other special districts, park districts, library districts, run nonpartisan elections. You don't see Republican or Democrat, or Green Party, or any other party associated with, with those. The, but most community, most suburbs, at least in the Chicagoland area, actually run partisan elections. If you ask somebody in Lake Forest whether they run a partisan election, they would tell you no, because nobody in Lake Forest runs as a Republican or Democrat. More often than not, they will run as either an independent, or there are small locally created parties. I'm very familiar because I've done work with the Village of Northbrook. The Northbrook Caucus is a party that only exists in Northbrook, and it runs every two years with a different name. Sometimes it's the Caucus of Northbrook, sometimes it's the Northbrook Caucus, but there are no Republicans and Democrats who file in those races. That is completely by choice and just by tradition. And also what it does is, it also avoids a primary. Because if you start, if you run as an independent, as many independents as want can run on a ballot, no primary is triggered. If you start your own political party, then you control the people who actually can join it, and there's no primaries triggered. In Waukegan traditionally, candidates for aldermen have run under established party slates. Established parties being Republican, Democrat, and then there are a few others that usually appear like on your gubernatorial ballot. I believe the Green Party may be an established political party. And there is traditionally a primary that occurs in February of odd number of years for municipal, for municipal officers, and then the general election will occur in April, the beginning of April. If this referendum was to be placed on the ballot and approved by a majority of Waukegan voters, and the earliest that it could go on the ballot would be the November 8, 2022 election, then the next election, next local election, which would be the February primary, would be run as a nonpartisan election. And it would be run, if you're at all, if you at all follow Chicago politics, it would be run very similar to that, where you have a large group of people running for each office, and the primary winnaes them down. They do not run as Democrats or Republicans, they do not run as independents. There is nothing besides their name except a blank space to check their name if you want to vote for them. If more than four candidates would file petitions for a single office, for instance, the imaginary 10th ward, I'm going to use that as an example. If more than four candidates file to be 10th ward alderman, then you have a primary. From that primary, the top two vote-getters would then advance to the final. This is what happened in Chicago, every year about, every four years, about 10 people want that job, I'm not sure why. But then there is a primary, and the top two vote-getters got, will advance. Last time it was Lori Lightfoot and Tony Preckwinkle, and they, they fought it out in the April general election. Same thing would happen here. If four or fewer candidates put in nominating petitions for any office, all four go to the general election. And so it would be similar in that there would, that Waukegan voters would still be voting twice in the way that they do when they have multiple candidates who are nominating themselves for political party primary, but there would simply not be those labels.
I have a question based on that, Stu. So we all have to run for office next year, and we start getting petitions...
All the aldermen do.
All the aldermen, sorry, yes, all of the aldermen. And we have to start getting petitions in like August, September, tournament in like November. So then if this were to get on the ballot and pass, then what happens to that election in February? Because we've now declared we were running as a Democrat in November, or, you know, thereabouts, and then things would change. So then how, how would that affect our, our next election?
Affect that election, I don't believe.
It, that is an excellent question, and that, that's something that I would like to bring up with the county clerk, because technically you're supposed to use nominating papers that correctly reflect whether you're partisan or nonpartisan status.
Well, and we would already have had our Democratic ones, well, I would have had my Democratic ones out there already, signed, because they have to be turned in, I think, around Thanksgiving. And if the election was the 8th, I mean, you wouldn't really have enough time to do your petitions necessarily over.
That, that is an excellent question, and we, that's one that we would bring up with the, the election official for the county, which would be the, I believe, the, the Lake County clerk.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for that explanation. I just wanted people to know it wasn't just about not declaring Republican or Democrat.
You know, if I may, Madam Mayor?
Absolutely, Alderman Turner.
You know, we just, we're having this discussion, it's great, but I just think about it this way. What could be more, what could be more democratic than allowing the citizens to decide what form of government they want? I say leave it to a vote. Let's put it on the ballot, and whatever the results of that, that referendum be, that be it. And I have to agree with Alderman Moiseo, though I've only been an alderman for about three years or so. I've been involved in Waukegan politics and Lake County politics since 2000, so for about 22 years. And I have never seen or heard any party reach out to a local elected official and try to influence their decision-making, so that's what I have seen. Thank you. You certainly haven't reached out to me, ever.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, this was just a discussion. At this time, closing items, you would technically get alderman time during this, would you like to, it's on the agenda, but I think we can pass on that and go on to our regular council meeting, is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Alderman Turner, second. Alderman Kirkwood. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back and do council meeting. Thank you.